Testing, okay. Welcome everyone to the March 28th, 2023 meeting of the Cupertino Planning Commission. Can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is the first in-person Planning Commission meeting in, I think, three years, or two, yeah, three years. So, welcome everybody. Can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Feng.
Present.
Commissioner Linsckog.
Present.
Commissioner Mistri.
Present.
Vice Chair Madipatla.
Yes.
And Chair Sharf.
Here.
Okay, so, our first item of business is the approval of minutes from the February 14th meeting. So if everybody could take a minute to look at those minutes if they haven't already, and then we can entertain a motion to approve them.
Chair Sharf.
Yes.
Um, I was told I have to make an announcement since I'm dialing in remotely to let everyone know that I am unable to attend in person because I'm at the Planning Commissioners Academy in Southern California, and I am alone in this room. There is no one here with me.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, um, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Are there any corrections to the minutes? Does anybody want to speak on the minutes? Sarah, has anyone raised their hand? I cannot see the part, oh, yes, I can, let's see. Okay, there's no attendees but their hands raised, so...
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
All right.
In a second.
Okay, can we have our roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Feng.
Aye.
Commissioner Linsckog.
Aye.
Commissioner Mistri.
I abstain.
Vice Chair Madipatla.
Yes.
And Chair Sharf.
Aye.
Motion carries for 001.
Okay. Are there any postponements? I don't see any on the agenda. So we are on to oral communications. This is the chance for members of the public to speak on any item not on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. So you get three minutes, and state law will prohibit the commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. And we will take the in-person cards first, and, um, if you're participating by Zoom, please raise your hand. So, Sarah.
So first on oral communications is Jennifer Griffin.
Okay, welcome Jennifer.
Good evening. It's good to see all the Planning Commission here. It's been a long time. I would not want to go through COVID again. I'm glad everybody's here. Just wanted to put a shout out. I am very, very concerned because the LRC went away. That's the Legislative Review Committee. I found that to be one of the most educational and engaging committees that I had ever been on, been, been on, attended, um, in the 23 years that I've been coming to Cupertino City Council meetings. And I'm very, very concerned because not having this committee is, um, preventing the people of Cupertino from understanding what is happening in their state. There are a lot of new, uh, bills, housing bills, et cetera, that will impact the life in Cupertino. I felt, I felt very, very fulfilled in the last two to three years when we had the LRC that I was able to understand what was happening in my state. It gave me a good foundation to understand the changes that were occurring. Now I feel I've been blindsided and left in the dark. I have had to go to other organizations within this state to try to understand what is happening in the state. And I, it has been, it takes time, but as someone, everyone also said, democracy is not easy. You, it takes time. It is messy. It is miserable. Sometimes you feel like you're climbing up a hill that is going to collapse underneath you, but that is what democracy is about. And it's about the people in this city, about the people in the state, and about the people in this country. It is their choice to have democracy, and that means that there has to be a public voice. I feel like with the removal of the LRC, that my public voice, my ability to understand what my governor and what is happening in the state has been taken away from me. I think it's very important that the LRC is returned, that we still have the contract with our legislative, um, legislative analyst. I don't even know if we have that anymore. I just feel like we have put the public in a very, very bad, bad place. But I am doing everything possible because my city has failed me. By removing the LRC, I am doing everything possible to replace it in my life and make sure that I am educated and that I understand and that I can make wise decision when it comes time to vote again for a governor and even council, um, council members and, uh, my state and local officials, and in long term, my president. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you Jennifer. Uh, who's next?
Next up, we have Lisa Warren, and on Zoom, we do have two attendees.
Right, I see the, them here too. But only, those the only two cards?
Uh, for in-person, yes.
Okay. All right, welcome Lisa.
Thank you. So, just want to highlight some things that have become very obvious recently, and that being our sign ordinance desperately needs updating. It is not on the work program. It needs to be somehow, and we need to get it fixed before we have similar situations that we have with public storage. We've got more buildings being proposed, more being, you know, with housing element, et cetera. So just to reiterate and to remind that we really need to be working on the sign ordinance. A similar thing we need to be working on is some changes to the general plan, one including the swap for extra height in buildings, commercial, office, whatever buildings, when height given for exchange for public retail. There's no designation, there's no definition of what that retail is, nor is there a requirement for the percentage of the space that needs to be retail, and we've been burned on that before, and we just need to fix things like that. There are several others, I'm just highlighting those two at this moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Lisa. On Zoom, we first have San Ar, welcome.
Yes, good evening. I'd like to express my disappointment at the replacement of Commissioner Ray Wong. While this body had nothing to do with that event, I do want to register my disappointment. I further want to bring to the chair's attention that it has come to the attention of residents that the first alternate that was appointed in place of Commissioner Ray Wong to the Planning Commission apparently is a developer associated with a firm called Blue Palms. I would like to request the chair to please ensure that on any agenda items that may involve a potential conflict of interest, to ask the first alternate now appointed in place of Commissioner Ray Wong to disclose any potential conflict of interest and preferably recuse himself from participation in the Planning Commission where there may be even the appearance of a conflict of interest. Just want to make sure the chair is aware of this, and the chair is actively keeping an eye out to ensure that there is appropriate recusals where it may be needed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next we have Rhoda Frye, welcome Rhoda.
Hi, Planning Commissioners. I'm also going to talk about the sign ordinance. I'm hoping that you could ask, agendize and ask the city attorney to explain why your decision in October reportedly had no legal standing. Your reason for rejecting the public storage sign was because it did not meet the municipal code, and the city council disagreed twice. Frankly, uh, the code is unequivocal about saying that signage shall not produce a distraction to motorists or residents, and I, I don't see how saying it's okay to shine lights in people's bedrooms until 11 o'clock at night is okay. I don't think it's okay. I don't think you think it's okay, and I don't understand why your decision had no legal standing. I think the public deserves to understand why so that we don't make the mistakes, if there were mistakes, at the Planning Commission level again. You guys are the experts, and I think you made the right decision in October, and I thank you very much. Good night.
Okay, thank you Rhoda. Okay, we are on to public hearings. The first item, item two, consider the proposed development of a 282,320 square foot office building with a detached parking structure and removal and replacement of 113 trees and exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act. Application number DP 202101, ASA 202103, TR 2021020. Applicant is Apple Incorporated. The location is 19191 Valco Parkway, Assessor Parcel Number 31620117. So, can we have our staff report?
Yes, good evening.
Actually, I had a comment before.
Oh, yes, okay, I'm sorry. There are two commissioners that will be recusing themselves on this, Commissioner Feng and Commissioner Linsckog. So I believe, um, city attorney, they need to leave the room, right? Correct?
Yes, they should, they should announce their recusal, state the basis for their recusal. The commissioner, applicant in person, should leave the room, but may listen if it's being broadcast outside or could listen online. The commissioner, any commissioner, I don't believe, do we, any commissioner that's present remotely should leave the Zoom meeting but can log in onto the public link if they wish to listen to the meeting that way, and then, then of course, both the in-person and remote commissioner can come back and rejoin the meeting after we hear this, this agenda item.
Okay, go ahead David.
Right. So, uh, in my, uh, in my past history, I have been an employee of Apple for 13 years. That is not a disqualifying circumstance. However, I do hold stock that is in excess of the disqualifying amount, therefore I'm recusing myself from this hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Sima.
Yeah, so I have a similar situation where I hold stock in greater amount than the recusal limits, so I will be recusing myself on this topic.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have the three, three of us which constitute an in-person quorum. So now, can we have the staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Planning Commission. It is indeed a pleasure to be back in person, so welcome back here, and I would like to introduce John Martier, who is going to be presenting this project for us and has been the project planner on this. Over to John.
Thank you, Pew. John Martier, Senior Planner, Community Development Department, Planning Division. And I'll echo her sentiment that I'm very happy to be back here and, and see everyone's smiling faces in person. Yeah, John Martier, again. I have been the project planner on this since the summer of this, the prior year. So let's get started. So again, not to repeat what the chair had said already, this is the subject for the, for the application. So, let's just dive right into the project location, existing uses. So, uh, the proposed project is at 19191 Valco Parkway, which is, why is there all these squiggly lines? Sorry about that. There we go. It's, it's, it's a street that's surrounded by a mix of uses. We can consider this, you know, office, retail, residential, hotel. The office portions are primarily north of Valco Parkway, on the northern side of Valco Parkway, and directly across in the main street development, whereas retail is along both sides of the corridor, on the north side is, you know, where the Valco Mall, the eastern part of the Valco Mall, as well as 1900 Development and the Main Street Development in the south, and same thing with the hotel and residential are both at 1900 and, and as well, the Main Street Development. Currently, it's a, it's actually a two-story office building, I apologize, at 35 feet, shouldn't say single story. The site is 7.96 acres, and the building is about 141,024 square feet, and is owned, in the parcel is owned and occupied by Apple. So going through the land use designations, general plan land use is commercial, office, residential. It is within the heart of the city's specific plan, specifically the East Stevens Creek Boulevard, South Valco Master Plan area, and the zoning designation is planned industrial park, general plan, I'm sorry, general commercial. So, again, just to summarize the development, the new development would pretty much double the size of what's there already at 282,320 square feet. Of that size, 280,000 will be, um, office, and 2,300, uh, square feet will be ground for commercial. Adjacent to the, just north of the office building will also be a six-level parking garage, two underground levels, as well as four above ground. With this application, our associated side improvements, including landscaping, parking, and the removal and replacement of 113 trees. So, the first thing to look at with, in the, in the staff report in this, in this presentation is general plan compliance, and first thing with that is the allocation. City Cupertino houses an allocation pot that, um, that guards, not guards, but I would say just measures development within the city, depending on the, on the special areas. So, specifically with commercial and office development. So, um, this development will come under two commercial, two development pots. The first is the commercial within the heart of the city's special area, and the second is the major employer office. Why isn't this, how does this development fall into this category? Not the general office category, it's because Apple is considered a major employer, they have headquarters in the city, as well as, again, a major employer, and with the city's interpretation, they also own and manage the, the, the property in which the project will be located. So the current allocation available for res, for retail in the heart of the city commercial pot is 793,270 square feet that they, they can be allocated from, and with the major employer, citywide is 523,000, um, square feet. The net project square footage to be allocated from there for the heart of the city retail is 2,300, leaving a balance of approximately 790,000, whereas a major employer, the net would be 139, approximately 140,000 square feet, which would leave a remaining allocation balance of 383,322. So general plan compliance, height and slope. So the general plan, um, within, um, within the land use chapter dictates the, the slopes, slope line setback, as well as the, um, the allowed height for, for buildings within certain special areas. So, along Tantau Avenue, there's a slope line setback that's one-to-one. This development falls well within that, well, slope line setback, and allows for buildings to go up to 45 feet, and with the provision of allowing retail on the bottom, the, the applicant may go up to 60 feet. The office building, uh, it gets up to approximately 59 feet, 58 feet, six inches, while the parking structure is below the 45-foot threshold of 42 feet, four inches. So, a little bit about the site design, here you have the, the site plan right here. So the common open space, there's three major areas within the site plan that have the, that, that are designated as common open space. So we have the retail, commercial, common open space in the front, adjacent to the, to Valco Parkway. You also have some employee common open space that, for those employees on the eastern side of the building, as well as the overlook into Calabasas Creek. The retail and parking structure, so the retail is located right here on the southwest corner of the building, again, adjacent to the, it's a common open space, as well as adjacent to Valco Parkway. And then you have the, the six-level parking structure in the rear, between 280 and the office structure. So development standards as, um, as mandated by the heart of the state's specific plan, front setback is, is required to be 35 feet. The proposed project as closest to, um, to Valco Parkway is 79 feet. And the 35 feet is actually from the, not from the property line, but actually from the face of curb. The interior side is based upon, uh, this is a side that's along, um, Calabasas Creek, the western side property line, um, minimum one-half of the height of the building, or 10 feet, whichever is greater. So for the office building, 30 feet would be the, the minimum side setback, while 21 feet would be for the parking structure. And so we can see as well that the, the office is well within that with the 131-foot setback from Cal, from the property line closest to Calabasas Creek, while the parking structure is as, closest to 58 feet. Corner side setback is 35 feet, and what we see for the office building, this is the side that's along Tantau Avenue, 126 feet for the office and 94 feet for park, for the parking structure in the rear. There's no rear setback, because it's not the rear property line, there's not a joint or a butt any residentially zone property, rather butts I-280. Still, the, the setback from the parking structure is 162 feet. So, a little bit about the design, you know, I'll save this part for the, the, you know, a lot of this part for the applicant's architect, architectural team which are here today to describe the genesis of the design, where they came up with, with this design pattern and whatnot. You know, as you see, it's very modern, angular, very similar to the other Apple structures along Tantau Boulevard in Apple Park. And you can see that these are renderings to show essentially, the first one on the top is right here, oh, it still works, okay. How it, how, how it blends in with the main street development across the street along Valco Parkway. And then, uh, what you have right here is a close-up along Valco Parkway where you see the commercial open space right here, as well as the, where the retail will be located right there, or supposed to be located, rather. And so this is a 3D rendering of, uh, of how the parking structure will look. As you can see, the, there's solar shade structure on the top level of the, of the parking garage, and you can see this is looking from the north, north to south, right here. As you see, the top of the, of this, of the, of the main office building, you have the utility structures, such as the air conditioning units and HVAC systems, all, all, hidden behind a massing structure. Or parapath structure, rather. And then you have this on the lower right, how the 3D rendering of this would be superimposed along the, the satellite structure, uh, sorry, satellite photo. So parking analysis, so, uh, the municipal code in 19124, um, states that any, any parcel that's within a planned development zone, the parking requirements in this chapter are more guidelines than, than, than standards. So an applicant for a development project can propose parking alternatives. So Apple is proposing a parking alternative based upon their existing demand management program, which is currently in place of several of their office sites within the city, principally Apple Park, okay? One of the standards as part of their application to have a parking alternative approved is having, you know, a parking analysis or some type of analysis of traffic or parking, indoor parking, uh, to, to see that if what they're proposing for the parking alternative would meet their development. So what, again, what Apple is proposing is to extend what they have already for their TDM from Apple Park and adjacent parcels to, to this, this project as well. What does a TDM include? Well, commute coaches, ride sharing, bicycling incentives, walking incentives, public transit, transit subsidies, and, or bike share. Okay, and I know that description was included in the, in the staff report as well. To better explain the justification for this, we do have the city's consultant fair and peers here to, to, to help answer any questions, as well as the Apple traffic team. So, what is the alternative parking standard? So, typically, in our ordinance, it's one space for every 285 square feet of office. The alternative standard is one space for every 311 and a half square feet for office. So this is a standard that's used in Apple Park as well. So, what the, what the developer is, what Apple is proposing is 914 spaces on-site. If they're going to go with a 311, they would have to provide 904, but they're providing more than the 311. If the ordinance were to be followed with a 1 to 285 square foot, without the parking alternative, they would need to require 995, um, parking spaces. So you're looking at a reduction of approximately 9%. Tree removal and replacement, um, so they're removing approximately 113, um, trees in the project site. 15 of those are actually offsite along Tantau, I'm sorry, along Valco Parkway, and this is the replacement plan, uh, where with the 113 trees to be removed, 126 will be replaced on that site. However, on top of those 126 trees, they're going to be planting a further 57 trees. So 95 trees will remain on-site, 126 will replace the 113, and plus they are adding 57 further trees. So, in total, 278 trees will be on-site. And again, 15 street trees will be removed and replaced in, in conjunction with the city's arborist and, and Public Works Department, I should, in consultation. So the environmental review, so the project is deemed to be categorically exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act under Secret Guidelines, Section 15183, as it is consistent with the development density established by existing zoning, community plan, or general plan policies for which an EIR was certified, and would not require additional environmental review, except this might be necessary to examine whether there are projects, project-specific significant effects which are peculiar to the project or its site. On zooming in is also our, the city's consultant who put together the CAGZ, the CAG exempt memo for the project from Placeworks, if you have any questions specific to the, to the, to this, to this environmental review. Staff, so in conclusion, staffer recommends approval of the project, since the project and conditions of approval address all concerns related to proposed development and all the findings for approval of the proposed project, consistent with Chapters 19156, 19168, and 14.18 of the Cupertino Municipal Code may be made. We do want to add one condition to the development permit resolution. This is, we want to title this one "Bird Safe Fenestration." Typically, staff does not want to be redundant with standards that are already in the municipal code. In this case, we, we have had a few comments about the, the fenestration on the site and whatnot, ensuring that it does meet the bird safe requirements of, of our municipal code. So, staff, we feel that we should probably add this condition of approval onto the, onto the development permit resolution, essentially stating the following, that the bird safe fenestration, consistent with CMC 19102030, the development shall implement the bird safe fenestration and glass requirements. The applicant prior to issuance of building permits may submit for an alternative compliance method in which the property owners, applicants may propose an alternate compliance method recommended by qualified biologists to meet the requirements in intent of 1910203, 030. The alternate compliance method shall be peer-reviewed by a third-party consultant, paid for by the applicant, and subject to the approval of the Director of Community Development. Next step is planning commission's recommendation will be forwarded to the city council on a special meeting April 13th. For its decision on the project, the city council's decision will be final unless reconsidered within 10 days of the decision. And that concludes my, um, presentation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, is it, should we let the applicant go now before we have public comment?
Yeah, I would recommend giving the applicant time to make a presentation.
Okay, so, welcome back Gary.
Yeah, okay.
Give me a sec to bring up my computer. Are you guys seeing my screen? Can it be brought up? Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, good evening. Chairperson Sharf and the rest of the Planning Commission. My name is Gary, and I'm part of Apple's real estate and development team. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to present to you our office redevelopment project, especially given that this is your first. especially given that this is your first in-person meeting for a while. Cupertino is our hometown, and we're proud to be here for more than forty, forty years. We're very excited about our latest office redevelopment project, especially with the opportunity to further expand our presence in Cupertino. So thank you for the time this evening and for your consideration. Can you guys, maybe IT team bring up the the feed again? There you go. Don't touch the screen, John. Our project is located at the northwest corner of Tanta and Valco Parkway. Currently, the existing site has a service, has service parking surrounding an existing two-story office building. The project site is unique in that it is extremely well screened from views, since I two eighty is to the north. Calabasas Creek is immediately to the west, and also Valco Parkway is immediately to the south and Tanta Avenue to the east. Essentially, we don't really have any immediate buddy neighbors. This is the proposed site plan. The plan is to demo the existing two-story office building and replace it with a four, a new four-story office building with a detached parking garage in the rear. The project is designed to be consistent with the city's code and the general plan. As part of this project, we're also proposing a two-thousand-three-hundred-square-feet corner ground floor commercial space with a large outdoor plaza area to help activate and support the future commercial and office activities. This is a rendering of the project as viewed along Valco Parkway. The project will significantly enhance the quality in the design of the office property. The project also will drastically improve the landscaping and streetscape of the site. The site sits on an existing seven-point-nine acres. The proposed four-story office building will be two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand square feet, and the garage structure will be four levels above ground with two levels below grade. The project has ample setback all around, exceeding the minimum requirements per code. And the project is parked at the same ratio as the approved Apple Park campus, and will be supported by Apple's robust transportation management plan, which promotes, incentivizes employees to ride share, commute through our shuttle program, and walk and bike to and from our office buildings. The project is proposing to remove a hundred and thirteen trees, fifteen of which are existing street trees to be removed at the request of the city in order to facilitate a new compliant public sidewalk with a wider and a brand-new detached landscaping Parkway. The remaining ninety-eight trees removed are in conflict with the proposed project footprint and infrastructures. It should be noted that the project will be planting back a hundred and eighty-three trees, increasing the total number of site trees from two-hundred-and-eight existing to two-hundred-and-seventy-eight after the project is complete. This is a view of Valco Parkway looking east towards the existing project site on the left, and you can see the the existing two-story office building. Same view with the proposed project this time, and in showing the new office building on the left. This is the view of the project site if you were to stand on Tanta Avenue looking west towards Valco Parkway. This is the same view with the proposed project. Note the existing large trees along Tanta will do a great job to screen the proposed office building. And you can see from this image that Tanta Avenue starts to pick up grade towards Highway two eighty. This is, this is a view of the existing office building standing on the driveway entrance along Valco Parkway. Notice the considerable amount of parking and driveway hardscape in front of the existing office building. As a comparison, this is the same view, but with the proposed new office building. The new office building is modern design, similar to the architectural styles of our other new Apple Park office buildings along Tanta Avenue. The architecture will be a significant improvement, as well as the new landscaping and streetscape along Valco Parkway, which includes new sidewalk, wider park strip, and a much richer landscaping, planting. On this view, you can also see the proposed commercial tenant space, positioned at the prime ground floor corner of the project with optimal visibility to Valco Parkway. This space will also be supported by the decorative and functional outdoor plaza to help draw customers and activate the frontage. This is a zoomed in-site view of the commercial space with the exterior decorative plaza shown in dotted blue. We've worked with city staff over the course of the design review process to enhance and enlarge the plaza space. We also increased the commercial space by more than fifty percent from our original design to max, to the maximum extent possible at two-thousand-three-hundred square feet. Even though the commercial space can accommodate a range of general commercial uses, given its location and proximity to the city's future pedestrian and bicycle trailhead to the west, we believe that a bike shop use will be, would be well-suited and successful at this location. Based on our research and outreach with various bike operators, the proposed two-thousand-three-hundred-square-foot commercial spit, space hits the sweet spot in terms of a size to facilitate a fully functional and successful bike shop for the area. Also, the decorative and functional exterior plaza area, approximately nine-thousand square feet, is intended to help activate future pedestrians and commercial activities to ensure the commercial attendance success. Lastly, the project will reserve ten parking stalls right in front of the project to support store employees and customers. This diagram shows just how close the proposed commercial space is to the future city's, city's future trailhead. Having a bike shop this close to the trailhead will help promote future bike and pedestrian activities, and will also help to optimize the success of the bike store. As you may know this already, but Apple has a huge bike population, approximately over a thousand of our employees bike to work on a daily basis. And we have a robust campus program that generates over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand bike trips per year. And these are individuals and employees that are biking to and from various offices within the city. It should be noted that Apple supported as well the city by funding the initial engineering and design concept of the trailhead that is shown here. We also dedicated a portion of our land along our frontage to ensure that the trailhead will transition smoothly from the public sidewalk. Also, as part of Apple's nine-point-seven-million transportation grant, oops, sorry about that, nine-point-seven-million transportation grant to Cupertino also pays for portions of the design and engineering analysis to the city to realize the future I-two-eighty trail. At Apple, we are deeply ingrained in the communities where we we live and work. As part of this commitment, we work to make a positive impact to both the people and to the planet. We've already achieved carbon neutrality for our entire company footprint since two-thousand-and-twenty, and we're now striving to make our entire supply chain carbon neutral by two-thousand-and-thirty. This project, Valco Parkway Office, or Office Project, like all other Apple facilities, will run entirely on renewable energy from day one. In addition, the new office building will run a hundred percent on electrical power without the use of natural gas. It also will be equipped with solar panels to further offset any energy use. The proposed project will also strive to achieve LEED gold standard, which will include high-performing water conservation and waste reduction attributes. In two thousand and nineteen, Apple committed to two-point-five billion dollars to combat housing crisis in California with a range of initiatives over several years. To date, Apple has deployed more than one-point-three billion dollars to a diverse range of projects, with more to come on the horizon. Most recently, Apple was partnering with County of Santa Clara to explore a deal transfer of a five-acre parcel that may help create opportunities for affordable housing development in the city of Cupertino. And the site is located near Wolf and Perimeter Road. As you may recall, Apple provided a nine-point-seven-million dollars in transportation grant to the city of Cupertino to support various bike and pedestrian safety improvement projects in the city, including the I-two-eighty trail project. And lastly, Apple and our employees are always consistently finding ways to give back through volunteering our time, giving through our employee giving program, of which Apple matches dollar-for-dollar, and other support for nonprofit organizations in the city of Cupertino. In addition to expanding Apple's presence in Cupertino and making significant improvements to the project property, the project will benefit the city financially in many ways, both in forms of one-time fees and recurring sustaining revenues. For example, we're expecting to to pay over eight million dollars in linkage, linkage fees and construction tax, taxes associated with this project. Within this amount, it also includes a four-point, approximately four-point-five million dollars going towards City of Cupertino's housing mitigation program. Also, we're expecting with this project, project's improvement in property value increasing significantly, that will help generate over two-hundred-thousand dollars per year into the city in terms of tax revenue. In addition, other benefits include, but not limited to, the services and also tax, sales tax revenue from the bike shop in the future. Also, a city, the opportunity for the city and Apple to collaborate to help retain and attract highly skilled workforce with the approval of this project. Not to mention the benefits of Apple employees to the surrounding commercial establishments and services. Lastly, we're excited that with this project, we're able to help promote more pedestrian and bike activities in the region. This ends our presentation, and again, we thank you for your time, and we're available to answer any questions.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, should we move to public comment now before we ask the applicant questions, or?
That's at your discretion.
Okay. Okay, well, yeah, I think we should ask you some questions while you're here. I can start. What is the before and after employee count in the old building versus the new building?
Currently, this is based on occupancy in terms of the projection. Currently, we have about five-hundred employees in the current building. With, with the, with the occupancy considered after the project is complete, we're looking north of a thousand.
Wait, you said before it's nine-hundred?
About five-hundred.
Five-hundred, so five-hundred, up to greater than a thousand.
Yep.
Okay. So about an additional five-hundred employees. Okay. You said you're going to strive to meet the LEED gold standard. What does that mean?
We're going to meet it. Thank you.
Okay, so that can be in our resolution, right? Okay. Is there, are there any plans for a separated bike lane on Valco Parkway? I don't think there's one there now. Is there a bike lane at all there? I can't even remember.
I would say that should be, there, there, there is a bike lane right in there. I think the, the best suited person to answer that question is probably your staff and Public Works Department.
Okay.
Since that, that is in the city's public right of way.
Okay, this may be for the city attorney. You kept interchanging commercial and retail. Are those the same, considered the same thing?
The retail, retail is a commercial use, a proposed commercial use on this site.
Okay, so if the retail's approved, I mean, can we say that it actually has to be retail and not restaurant? And is that within our purview? I'm thinking of what's happening in another development there where we, in that area, where we, the city specified a certain percentage of retail and a certain percentage of restaurant use, and the owner is now trying to decrease the retail.
So I'm going to defer to our planning staff whether there's any provision, whether you could think of any provision in the zoning ordinance that would allow us to limit use to that extent.
You feel free to jump in to save me if I, if I go off path. You know, what we've interpreted retail as being sales tax generating type of uses. So I think that would be the preference for the standard in the general plan.
Okay. Okay, for the applicant, how many employees per square feet of office space do you generally have in your buildings?
Actually, off the cuff, I actually, I don't know the answer to that question. Okay.
I mean, it could be one-fifty, it could be three-hundred, it's a...
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. I'd like to introduce to you Melissa Shiel, who leads our global real estate and site services program.
Okay, great.
She can, she's best suited to answer that question. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, we're honored to be here, thank you for your time. To answer your question about how many square feet per person in our buildings, it really ranges depending on how that particular building is laid out, the efficiency of the building. It can be anywhere as low as a hundred-and-fifty upwards of three-hundred, again, just completely depending on what is happening in that building.
Okay, yeah, I'm just wondering, and with work from home, are you like increasing the total number of employees because not everyone will be there every day? And like, like desk sharing, we've read about at another company where, you know, the employee doesn't really get a cubicle or, or office or anything.
We don't have plans for desk sharing at this time. We have a hybrid work policy that has been implemented by the company, which right now is for those who can perform any work remotely, they would come in three days a week. But we're not at this time implementing any desk sharing.
Okay.
And I, I would note that those three days are mandatory, they're not voluntary.
Right, and can the employee choose which days, or that's up to their manager?
It's largely dependent on the leadership. The intent is for those who need to collaborate to all be in person at the same time.
Okay, so in addition to the proposed bike shop, is there any cafe or anything that's open to the public? Or that would only be for Apple employees if there is one?
There's not an intended cafe that we plan to be open to the public at this time, no.
Okay, that's all the questions I have for now. So, Mooney, do you want to go?
Yeah. Could you hear me? Okay, so I, I have a couple of questions. So just a curiosity, on the parking structure, I like the fact that you have solar panels. Just curious, you know, why you didn't go all the way through? Kind of, you know, seemed to have stopped at, you know, three-fourth of the area, and you know, there's one-fourth on the left, just curious.
Yeah, part of the challenge, great question, by the way, part of the challenge with solar panels is that, you know, it's not, there's sometimes there's locations where you can't put it, especially with those utility mechanical equipments on rooftops. So that's also part of the reason why we are proposing solar panels on top of our parking garage as opposed on top of our office building, which it's loaded with mechanical equipments. So rest is short, that what we're proposing is the maximum extent possible in terms of real estate on the roof and over the garage.
Yeah, on, on the parking structure also, it, it didn't go all the way through, right? It's, it's kind of, you know, three-fourth. I'm just curious, you know, why it didn't go all the way through, so that would have been ID. The other one, I'm concerned about, you know, the nine percent parking shortage. So I'm curious to know how well your TDM program is working in other buildings where you have a similar situation, right? We have some examples of, you know, here is a building that, you know, we have, you know, less parking than, you know, required, but you know, we're, here is how we are managing, so I'm just curious to see, you know, if you have some data.
Another great question. I would say that Apple Park is parked at the same ratio with the same bicycle and vehicle parking ratio. All the new office buildings up and down Tanta Avenue, they're all parked to the same ratios. So this ratio is tried and true. I would say our TDM program is perform, performing wonderfully. You know, it, it's serving its purpose, and, and that's why we're very confident that this new, this project under this new ratio will work just as well.
So I do see, you know, on this side of the Valco Parkway, there are a lot of, you know, apartments in the housing. So since you're going from, you know, two stories to four stories, I'm just curious, you know, what's the interior lighting situation in the night, right? Is it going to be fully lighted, or no, is it going to be dark? I'm concerned about, you know, those residents, and, and so what, what's the plan, like, you know? know, the lighting, interior lighting?
I don't believe we have immediate adjacency to any residential. They're quite, quite the distance away. We face back of the garage and also the back of the office building at Main Street, but I get where you're like, kind of diagonally far away, there's the hotel and then there's a residential, so it's quite far away. We mentioned earlier, we're going to strive for lead standard, and as part of that, there's commissioning process. One of the topic is lighting efficiency. So and that's one of the topics that's, you know, near and dear to Apple. We're always making sure that we're efficient in terms of energy use and and that's also designed into our program as well, like occupancy sensors and and making sure that the light isn't going to be utilized when the rooms are not active.
I mean, with the newer technology, you know, the LED lights, you know, you could still be, you know, energy efficient and totally bright, right? Like, there's an example of, you know, a development that's, you know, recently happened. I went and looked at it, you know, I wasn't part of, you know, approving it. Even if I approved it, now I wouldn't have known it at that time. Now, after it's built out and I went and saw, you know, from some residences, you know, I didn't like, you know, what I was seeing. It's too much, too bright, too much of brightness in the nights, right? So that's very distracting, you know, to residents that are living nearby.
Yep.
So I would like to hear some measures being taken where, you know, the lighting that emits out of the buildings towards, you know, residential neighborhoods are somehow, you know, constrained, right? So.
Yeah, we would strive to minimize that at night. As Gary mentioned, the lighting would be controlled by occupancy sensors, so when there are not people in the building, there won't be lights that aren't needed for emergency and backup on in the building. So at at night, we don't see necessarily a ton of activity late at, late at night, and we don't, we don't see it being an issue, but it is sensor driven.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, no questions from our new planning commissioner, and so we will move on now to public comment. So Sarah, do we have any blue cards?
We do, we have three here. The first one is Jennifer Griffin, followed by Connie Cunningham.
Okay, welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I was glad to see Gary again. He was with Cupertino for many years, and I always felt we were in really good hands. And I hope we are now, I think we are. I, I was able to meet with John Martier, I think, two times and for several hours, and I felt, I really liked the way that the setup was. I'm not real happy about that new bill that went in in January where you can't see the plans for things. I, I don't know why the governor signed it because it hadn't been set up correctly to roll out, but like I said, it's like dancing backwards in high heels. We're all stumbling along trying to deal with it. But I think that I like the setup where we were able to see the whole building with a big screen. We spent the time talking about the trees. And my main, one of my main concerns was that we keep that area over there green. I worked at Tandem for two years in the mid eighties, and I was in the two buildings immediately adjacent to the west side of this building, on the other side of Calabasas. And this building that we're talking about today was Jimmy Trabig's executive offices. He was the head of Tandem. And I think that it's very important that anything that is being constructed or rebuilt in that area of of Alco Parkway and Tantao retains the green canopy. The public has spent a great deal of time making sure that there are green trees there. And if, I was mainly concerned about the sixteen street trees. I think that the ones on Tantao, the ashes are not in, they're actually in the ground, they're not in containers, and those trees look very healthy if they could be maintained. I understand the ones in the front will be replaced with other ash trees. So if they have to go, I'm hopeful that we will have in-kind ash trees. I did speak to John quite a bit about the TDM, and he explained that to me. I was concerned about, when this building was remodeled about five, seven years ago, they put buses in, and I was concerned with any change, how the bus pattern would be. We talked about the retail, and my only concern would be if the buses are coming out past where the bike shop is, we want to make sure that there's no collision of bikes and people walking. We talked about Calabasas Creek and where the trailhead is, so I feel comfortable with that. And this building is similar to the R and D building that is immediately on the other side of Tantao, which my husband thinks is one of the best-looking buildings in the whole area. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Hey, thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Connie Cunningham, welcome Connie, followed by who, Sarah?
After that is Lisa Warren.
Okay, welcome Connie.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Connie Cunningham, and I'm here to represent myself, although I am a housing commissioner. I have read the information from the Audubon Society, and I'm particularly interested in that particular topic. I know that we have been told that, excuse me, our bird-sky ordinance will use the alternate, alternate compliance method, but that didn't actually answer the question of what kinds of things are happening, what will be done? If you're not doing what's in the plan, what is being in the plan and what kind of interaction would you have with folks who are interested in that particular information? Trees specifically, a question on, there is a loss of, on Valco Parkway as mitigation for loss of trees or canopy cover elsewhere. Is that what those trees were, the initial ones planted at Valco Parkway? The project description proposes that eleven, one hundred and thirteen trees will be removed. The Arborist report states ninety-six, and wondered what the discrepancy was on that. Secondly, was the dark sky and bird safety item. We are particularly concerned that the glass, it looks like in the drawings that the glass is untreated and has transparent corners. This is specifically something that kills birds. They can't see the way we do. They go right through that and think of it as the sky. There is much updated information on threat factors and Cupertino, we would like Cupertino to ask for and ask if the applicant is amenable to using a threat factor lower than twenty and avoid UV treatments because UV treatments are considered quite ineffective. The dark, secondly, the dark sky ordinance requires that correlated color temperature of outdoor lighting not exceed three thousand Kelvin. This still has a large blue light component, which is unhealthy to us humans as well it is to ecosystems. Newer recommendations as well as increased product availability supports a lower, would the contractor be amenable to using twenty-seven hundred or less, especially within three hundred feet of the riparian corridor? And next, can the applicant provide detail on the creek corridor? For example, what is the width of the creek setback and what structures and activities are permitted in the setback? I know, John, you did send me that information, I wanted to repeat it for here. And also, I was concerned, wondering about that channel in the back that's owned by the water company, and if you have the same kind of restrictions and protections there as you do for the I two eighty trail. Thank you for this time to comment.
Okay, thank you, Connie. Would the applicant like to answer those questions before Lisa speaks? The, what is the alternate plan for the bird safe design? The, the threat factor of twenty and the twenty-seven hundred degree Kelvin lighting?
Okay, all great questions, thank you. The alternative plan has been reviewed by ESA, project biologists, and peer reviewed by Place, Placework. One of the, the intent of the ordinance recognizes, regards to bird safe, recognizes all sites and buildings are not created equal, especially considering the, the surrounding. So essentially, what we're proposing is sort of a customized approach reviewed by a biologist. But what, that being said, we are still very much going to be using bird safe windows at strategic locations, taking, taking in consideration of the, the riparian corridor to the left from Calabasas Creek and whatnot. So essentially, it's, it's basically a highly efficient plan. That's, that's what it means. In terms of the temperature light for the site, we could, we're committed to meeting the city's ordinance at three thousand Kelvin. We're happy to look into other temperatures. However, what we can commit to is the city's or city's requirement. What was the third, what was the third topic?
This threat factor of twenty.
Yeah, so we're going to be using windows that are bird safe. That is going to be endorsed and approved by the biologist. I'm not familiar with the, the factors that's being referenced, but definitely it's going to be compliant with the city's policy for bird safe. But the windows we're going to be using.
Is there some extra expense of going to twenty-seven hundred degrees or would be, there be a reason why you would not want to do that?
Yeah, so I can appreciate this topic because there's a lot of factors that would go into our final selections of the type of windows. There's different patterns, different striping or dots that that are all acceptable. I think availability is, is a factor and also kind of the final design, construction, applications and whatnot, so.
No, no, I had asked about the twenty-seven hundred degrees versus three thousand. Is there an issue with the twenty-seven hundred? Is it more expensive or?
I can't speak to the expense, but what I would say, as Gary mentioned, is we plan on complying with all of the city's codes. We know that you put a lot of research and thought into what the codes need to be. We absolutely respect and will be abiding by those, and so that's, that's what we're planning to do.
Okay.
Through the chair, if I may, it's John Martier.
Yes.
Right here. I just want a point, point of clarification, you know, Placeworks has not peer reviewed the, the avian biologist's report yet, or, you know, and so we, so during the, hence why I had the, that supplemental condition out of the, during the presentation was to add that, to clarify that if the applicant were to propose an alternative standard as, as Mr. Chow made it clear, that during the building permit process, prior to issuance of said building permit, we would have a third party, avian biologist selected by the city.
Right, okay. Okay, very good. Okay, I think that does it, and sorry to delay you, Lisa, welcome Lisa Warren.
And, you know, if the clerk could maybe pull up those pictures I sent earlier today, I didn't request that at the time, but it's kind of becoming necessary for them, or would be ideal if they were there. I don't need them right away, it's kind of toward the end of my spiel. Okay, so I'm concerned about the retail for height unbalanced or imbalanced, however you want to look at it, in the city's general plan. So regardless of whether the applicant is following that ordinance, I don't think it's enough. I'm also concerned about the interchanging of the word commercial and retail and a no real definition of what that is. The proposed bike store may not be as popular as planned, and it may need to change. That has happened in a currently occupied Apple building with a retail corner. And I just think, it's not Apple-owned, at least. I just think that needs to be cleaned up and make it very clear that they are getting their fourth floor of seventy thousand square feet, give or take, in exchange for twenty-three hundred square feet of something that may or may not be required to be retail versus commercial, as I understand that terminology. But there's no clarification, and we need that badly. It's kind of, actually, it's disappointing that this particular applicant would consider that they've done enough to give to the community for a fourth floor. I'm, I am disappointed in that flat out. I know I am not alone. I'm also a little concerned about whether tent spaces, parking spaces enough when you add employees, because I was under the impression that that was for the public, but it's, I heard Gary say, public and employees. So is that enough parking? Maybe it is, I don't know. So let's see, let me skip to trees. Oh, no, here's an important thing. What is the mechanism used by the city to ensure that the commercial or retail, retail space acts and remains as publicly accessible amenity and with adequate parking? Like, we, we have situations in the city that staff has heard me talk about, starting years ago and most recently this week, that it's not, oh, crap, I'm not going to get everything. Okay, sorry, future exemptions, alternative standards, please, don't just let those be the things that slip by quickly and easily, have them all come back to planning and council. Majority glass buildings are a way different story, and if you could show those pictures, thank you.
Okay, finish up.
This is a building across two eighty from the backyard of residential single-family homes, and that is the glare from the sun, and at night, it's lit.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. And you did raise a good point, the, and this has been run into before, that we don't have a definition of what the ground floor retail is before you get the extra height. And this happened at the Hyatt Hotel as well, where we were supposed to get retail, we really didn't, but they did get the extra height. Okay, we are on to the, wait, Sarah, are there any other blue cards in the meantime? Okay, so we're on to the Zoom attendees. The first person is San Ar, welcome.
Good evening, Chair and Plan Commission. I'm a resident of Cupertino, speaking for myself. I also have the privilege of having been a former employee of HB, like one of the former speakers. I actually worked in those buildings that are being replaced, so have some unique historical perspective to this. I also worked in the spaceship, what is now the Spaceship Campus, that was then the former HB campus. And so having that almost ten-year perspective of having been in originally the HB campuses and then the, what was then the compact buildings, after compacted a quite tandem, I do want to say that there is probably no better future owner for that property than Apple. Apple has been a very responsible and excellent steward of the lands of Cupertino in taking ownership of what has been the legacy of Ula Faktor and the legacy of Tandem. And I'm extremely happy to see Apple continuing to further the beauty of that region by expanding their property and their new office. I would like to express my support and unconditional support for the project as proposed by Apple. I would like to urge the Planning Commission to efficiently approve the plan as proposed and to not further the past reputation of Cupertino as being a difficult city to do business in. Apple could do business in any city, indeed, they have expanded to Sunnyvale. They could do business in any state. It is the good fortune of Cupertino's residents that they choose to continue their legacy in our city. And so I have listened to a number of the previous speakers' questions. I'm befuddled by why we would pose a potential security risk to Apple's employees by asking for a non-Apple tenant to occupy that building that increases security risks, not knowing who walks into that building. I urge you to keep security in mind and to allow Apple the freedom to exclusively use the property for their employees so that security can be maximized and they do not need to deal with non-Apple employees walking into that building and the challenges it may pose for Apple employees. I do want to say also that the, the proposal around retail versus commercial, I do find that somewhat academic. Our residents and the market will speak for what Cupertino wants. I have heard the comment from the Chair about the adjacent property and so the retail was the restaurant comments that came in. Frankly, I don't know how often Planning Commissioners and the council as well attend and use the properties on the adjacent site. We are short of restaurants and will be even more short of restaurants as Apple continues to expand.
Yeah, please finish up.
Please approve, so please approve the project unconditionally with efficiency and make this a city that Apple wants to continue to do business in. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I do want to point out that the tenant for the retail will not be Apple, it will be some other company, hopefully a bike shop that they lease it to. It will be some other company, hopefully a bike shop that they lease it to. But it's not going to be an Apple-owned retail, Apple-operated retail store. Next is Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening Chair Scharf and Planning Commission. My name is Jean Bedord and I'm a resident of Cupertino. I would like to echo a lot of the comments that the previous speaker spoke about. Let's get this building approved and get the construction underway. It is a project to replace an obsolete building with a new state-of-the-art office building. That's what we need here in Cupertino. The old building shows its age and it's clearly a 1980s design, built before Apple Park and Main Street. It's totally car-centric with little consideration for pedestrians, bicycles, and alternative transportation. And the technology, particularly Apple's technology, has certainly changed. Remember, there are significant benefits to the city in approving this. The replacement triggers a reassessment, so Apple has to pay a higher property tax. More money for Cupertino. Adding more employees in this location will also help the struggling restaurants and services along Valco Parkway and Main Street. Yes, Apple employees use non-Apple restaurants and services. In addition, Apple's commitment to bicycle services and activities is consistent with the city's focus on improving pedestrian and bike activities in the city. In general, I've always been impressed by the improvements Apple has made to the buildings that they either own or lease in the city. So I approve you, I urge you to approve this building tonight with minimal changes. And let's get the show on the road and get this construction underway. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jean. Next is Steve Kelly.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Commissioner Scharf, Planning Commissioners, I served eight years on the Santa Clara Planning Commission. I served on the Stevens Creek Advisory Commission. And I live on the border, like a lot of Santa Clara residents, with Apple and deal with the traffic on a daily basis. I have no problem with the project. I think it's a wonderful project. I love the fact that it's bike-friendly. I do have a problem with the fact that I don't think Apple's done enough to provide housing in the immediate area. It's great that they've provided 2.5 billion in housing countywide, but we need high-density housing close to the core businesses. And Apple makes up the vast majority of commercial office space in the immediate area. They occupy the two Oval Towers. They occupy the former Merrill Lynch Office Tower, right there at Stevens Creek and Lawrence. I would like to see more than the five-acre parcel designated right now for a five or six-story housing project. You know, maybe with retail on the bottom, along Stevens Creek, or in the general facility of the new Rise Development. The Rise Development by itself is supposed to create a million square feet of office. So I think it's fair to ask Apple, and I'd like Apple to respond, what are they planning to do to help developers find sites that can be developed to provide the needed housing for Apple employees, Apple support staff, service staff, or Apple? Because for years, Apple has done wonderful projects, but done nothing in the immediate area for housing. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Next is, well, would Apple like to respond? I think they did mention the housing that, along Perimeter Road. So if you, can you comment on that resident's concern?
Hi, yes, I'm happy to talk about our affordable housing initiative. In 2019, as Gary mentioned, Apple committed to making $2.5 billion, or committed $2.5 billion toward improving the affordable housing that is available in California. Couple of things. I know that the Rise project has thousands of units that are coming online. What their affordability is or is not, I can't speak to. But the market responds to the needs of market-rate housing, which our employees used. We are partnering with affordable housing developers to develop housing units. We have money available through some of our partnerships and in doing direct loans to developers as the last gap or last tranche funding for deeply affordable units. We have, as Gary mentioned, over 700 units that we have funded to date in and around California. We continue to actively look for projects that developers have where they are ready for financing. So to the extent that people know about those, I certainly would encourage them to send those developers our way. So we feel like we're doing a lot in this area. I think the other thing that Gary mentioned is this parcel that we have been working with on a land swap with the County of Santa Clara to make available for the county to develop hundreds of units of affordable housing on that parcel within the city of Cupertino. So we're definitely, we're definitely doing, we have done a lot in affordable housing since we made our commitment announcement. We're continuing to look and actively fund projects in the nearby region. And we encourage people who know about developments that are looking for affordable developments that are looking for funding to submit, submit any inquiries to us.
Okay, and just to be clear that, what was it, three-point, something billion?
2.5 billion.
Okay, that's for the whole state of California though, right? Not for Santa Clara County or?
In the whole state of California. To date, we have already deployed 1.3 billion of that. A lot of it has been focused in Santa Clara Valley.
Okay, all right, thank you. Last, we have Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Good evening Commissioners. I always learn something new and Connie Cunningham has something to say about birds. I'm always impressed by Apple going over the top on its projects. And I do hope that the best-in-class bird-safe construction methods are given, are made, given the extensive fenestration on this project. And I'm also concerned about the impact on current and future residents with respect to reflections and light trespass. Also, I do have a question for the applicant regarding traffic. I know that we did traffic modeling for the Spaceship Building and like the others. And now that that building is occupied, how are we doing? How did the modeling compare to actual? And is it appropriate to apply that modeling to this new building? Additionally, given the size of this project, I'm asking that the Planning Commission request Planning Staff bring back to Commission any modifications or enhancements to this plan rather than approve them ministerially. We've seen this happen in the past. And, you know, given the size of project, I would like to see them as a whole. I also sent you a letter earlier today. Possible, it'd be great to add some more trees to Tantow. I really like the double trees, by the way, on the road, on Valco Parkway. With respect to the retail, yeah, you know, I have to agree with Lisa Warren. It just seems that, and really, this doesn't have to do with Apple. This is a general comment, is that our, the whole density bonus is, seems to be flawed to say, okay, well, if you do postage stamp, not that this is, but postage stamp retail, it's going to get you another 20 feet in height. And in this case, Apple is not taking 20, they're going from 45 to 58 when they're entitled to 65 for putting this retail in. With respect to the size of the retail establishment, yeah, I did some quick square footage, looking at various bike stores. I used Google Earth. They're not going to be especially, sorry, completely accurate, but really, I came up between 4,000 and 9,000 square feet on two, four, six different properties. It's in my, it's in my letter to you. And as Lisa had mentioned, you know, what will we do to ensure that a tenant will stay in that area? And, please read my letter. And thank you for all your hard work, Apple especially, and the Planning Department, and of course, our volunteer Planning Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rhoda. Let me check one more time if there's any, anyone else that raised their hand. Doesn't look like it. Okay, so we will bring it back to the Planning Commission now. Any more questions, Mooney?
So I have a couple of questions to the staff.
Okay, go ahead.
So when we say, you know, ground floor retail, and so the height goes up, you know, to certain height, so my assumption and expectation was the entire floor is, you know, retail, right? So that's not the case here, right? So it's like, you know, it's an entirely office building, there's a little bit of a retail, you know, like commercial, like 2,000, 2,300 square feet. So can you please help clarify that? So what do we mean when we say, you know, ground floor retail, so you know, the height can go up?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. It's a very simple standard within the land use element of the general plan, which essentially just states if, you know, typically in this special area, it's 45 feet. But if you provide ground floor retail, you're allowed to go up to 60. And it's, there's no specifications for.
So it could be a one-square foot of retail? Technically.
I don't know how to answer that, but, you know, I think it has to be functional. And so that's where staff works with the applicant. You know, I believe when, you know, when, again, I took over the summer, you know, when I worked with my prior, with my former colleagues who had had this project, the retail portion is actually a lot smaller. So we worked with them to have a functional retail space that went from, I believe, correct me, Apple, from, it was like 1,500 square feet up to 2,300 square feet. I guess some of that's probably more in line with what's typically being proposed in the area.
Second question. So do we know what this extra office space build-out does to, you know, our housing equation in Cupertino?
Sure.
I'll take that question. So the office allocation that is in the general plan already accounts for any, you know, growth? If you look at it from a regional perspective, you know, that any housing growth, for example, I know there is a lot of consternation about, you know, if the jobs go up, the housing allocation to the city goes up. All of the square footage is acknowledged and built into the regional plans as being developed as part of our city's plans, because this is in our build-out. We already anticipate that by 2030, 2040, that we will be building out to this much of office square footage. So when we feed information up to the regional agencies that do come up with any projections for housing, for example, all of this growth is built into those assumptions.
So the plan that we submitted for the next housing cycle accounts for, you know, all of these office allocations?
So the next housing cycle is really the seventh cycle. We're still in the sixth cycle. We're still trying to come up with our housing element for the sixth cycle. But yes, this, all of this growth is built into those projections.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you have anything to just? No, okay. Okay, seeing no more people wishing to speak and no more questions by the Planning Commission. So Jean, can you put back up your, that slide of the change you wanted for the bird-safe? Because I don't think I have that in my packet, do I? Okay. So under which resolution would we add this condition or do we just?
It'll be the development permit resolution. So on the cover page, you see for the resolution, the draft resolution, it'll be added there. And then, once we bring it to council, it would be added into the council resolution, enumerated in the future.
Okay, very good. So would anyone like to make a motion?
I have one more.
Okay, go ahead, Mooney.
So since, you know, the retail was used, you know, the 2,000 square, 300 square feet, commercial retail was, you know, used as, you know, criteria for the extra office space or extra height, can we make that some kind of, you know, deed restriction or attach, like, you know, where it doesn't become something else down the line? How do we make that binding?
Well, so a change, a change of use from what's approved would require a new permit. The conditions of approval run with the land.
Right, so that's the condition for approval right now, right?
Correct.
But down the line, right, that could change, right? So like, the property gets sold to someone else, right? So is that condition transferred with that or, you know?
Yes, runs with the land. So if Apple were to sell the property, whoever acquired the property would be bound by the conditions of approval.
So the 2,300 square foot will end up staying retail forever?
There would, there would need to be, if Apple, say, wanted to change that to office use, there would need to be another permit process to change the use. As well as Apple's successor.
And would that come to the Planning Commissioner, City Council, or would that be Planning Staff decision?
It would depend on the application. You know, I don't want to speculate on something that that's a future use, but if it were, it would depend on the approval authority for the type of approval that was being sought.
Yeah, my ask is, you know, whatever criteria that, you know, the conditions under which, you know, we are approving this, I want that to be, you know, binding condition.
It is a binding condition, you know, just like in any land use decision, subject to a subsequent permit to change the use at some point down the line. But it would be binding on Apple as well as any successors in interest that were to acquire the property.
Thank you.
Okay. So I don't have resolution numbers in my things. Is that?
Those aren't given till after the hearing.
Okay, okay. All right, so I will, I will make a motion that the Planning Commission adopt draft resolutions, attachments 1 to 3, find the project exempt from SEQA, approve the adoption of alternate, alternative parking standards pursuant to Municipal Code Section 19-124.060C, approve the development permit DP 2021-001, approve the architectural and site approval permit ASA 2021-003, and approve the tree removal permit TR 2021-020. And can you put that back up, John? Okay. With the added condition, the development permit resolution, bird-safe fenestration, I've not heard that word before, consistent with Cupertino Municipal Code 19-102-030, the development shall implement the bird-safe fenestration and glass requirements. The applicant, prior to issuance of a building permits, may submit for an alternative compliance method in which the property owners and applicants may propose an alternative compliance method recommended by a qualified biologist to meet the requirements and intent of Cupertino Municipal Code 19.102.030. The alternate compliance method shall be peer-reviewed by a third-party consultant, paid for by the applicant, and subject to the approval of the Director of Community Development. So did I get everything in there, Chris?
I believe that's, that you did a very good job of reading that, Chair Scharf.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for reading it. I'll second.
Yes, okay, so, so, Mooney, seconds.
Just before we deliberate, I should note that I met with Gary and Rod yesterday, just to go through their presentation.
Oh, okay, thank you, yes. I also had ex parte communications with Gary and Rod yesterday and with Rod on previous occasions. So, yeah, thank you for reminding me of that. So can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner, well, Commissioner Mistry?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mariupala?
Yes.
And Chair Scharf?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Voting is on this, right?
No, we're not doing voting with the buttons now. Okay, it's 8:15. Why don't we take a break before item 3 and return at 8:20? Thank you.
Thank you for letting me join you.
Bye, Chris. Okay, we are on. Okay, we are on to item three. This is the review of the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 capital improvement program proposal for consistency with the city of Cupertino's general plan. So can we have a staff report?
Good evening, planning commission. Again, Piyush Planning Manager, we have Susan here, who will be presenting from Public Works, who will be, are, I'm sorry, let me repeat that. We have Susan here from Public Works, who is our capital improvements program manager, and she will be making the presentation on this project.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Susan Michael. I am the CIP manager. Can everybody see my screen, the presentation? No?
We can see it here. I don't know about the big screens.
Perfect, thank you. I just didn't, I didn't practice from this spot.
I can't see it. Where, am I supposed to be looking at something?
Oh, it should be on the Zoom.
I'm seeing you on the Zoom.
It's not on the Zoom feed right now.
I see it now.
Okay, great. Thank you. So tonight, we're going to be going through staff's proposal for the CIP for this year to make sure that it's consistent with the general plan. And here we are. Tonight, we are asking the commission to review the fiscal year 2324 CIP proposal, and we hope that you do find it consistent with the city's general plan. So tonight's agenda, tonight we'll start with an attempt to define CIP and the goals and the priorities of the city that shape the CIP, and then we'll review the new projects for this year within the context of the consistency with the general plan. Just a reminder that you can find more information on the current CIP projects on the CIP dashboard, which is on the city's website in the public works section, or you can use the QR code that you see here to get there more directly. So what is the capital improvement programs project? Capital improvements are projects that improve our city's assets. These are enhancements, rest, restorations, adoptions, or the creation of assets like streets or parks. So when is a project a CIP project? We've found a useful description is that when you need an architect or an engineer or some other design professional, that is a CIP project. It usually costs over approximately $60,000 as well. Those are just guidelines. So I also wanted to just give a brief mention to what is the process. First, the staff submits proposals to the CIT, CIP division for consideration. Our field operations staff keeps the CIP apprised of significant projects and helps us to know what their priorities are. We receive proposals from other departments as well. In January, we review those submittals within Public Works and with the city manager's office. We then take our initial list to the bike ped commission and the park and red commission. We did that in February this year. And as you know, here we are at the planning commission in March. We presented to the council March 7, and in turn, after that review, it will be part of the budget discussions in May. And also, a quick note to how we prioritize and rank the CIP projects. We do have different criteria that we use to help us decide what are the most important projects to include. Our highest priority projects are those that are necessary to protect the public health and safety. We do take in feedback, comments, and suggestions from the community council and the commissions. And there are projects that, there are subsequent phases of on, of an existing project, and it's logical to continue those projects. In this category, we also have projects that have been on hold and we need to reactivate them. One of our biggest resources for direction comes from the master plans, including the general plan, and that generates a good deal of our direction. And we, and we aim to do projects that are fiscally responsible for the city. This includes being responsible with our resources, like staff. We don't want to over commit to projects that we can't activate. So we will review the proposed new projects. So I have two slides on each of the projects. The first one's the project information, and the second one is addressing the conformance with the general plan. And I also, one of the attachments, attachment four, has a good deal of detail of goals, policies, and strategies from the general plan that relate to each project. I'm going through just some of the highlights here in, in order to keep it brief. So the first project is the Stevens Creek Boulevard Calabasas Creek Storm Drain Repair. The pipe in this location has rusted out and it needs to be replaced, straightforward. You'll see there, it's a photo of the storm drain from the Caltrans Biennial Bridge inspection, inspection, where the corrosion was identified. And this is consistent with the general plan as it is a project to maintain our storm drain infrastructure.
So what does RCP stand for?
RCP? Reflection Sewing Plan? Where's that, where do you see that?
In the previous slide.
Excuse me, RCP stands for reinforced concrete pipe.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Architect, engineer, yeah. Okay.
How long is that, that drain pipe, the stretch?
In this section, it's corroded. It's approximately 40, 40 linear feet, if I recall.
It's 40 feet long?
Yeah.
Thank you. So we are also proposing to expand the fiber optic network to the new city hall annex building. We purchased the building at the corner of Torre and Pacifica, and we are doing that renovation now. This, the fiber optic, the 2020 fiber optic master plan identified the best places and ways to expand the city's fiber optic system, and this is one of the seven projects identified in that report. We're asking that this one be undertaken now, because the annex is an active project, and it makes sense to do this project before the building goes online. Keep in mind that we are keen that this building has a fiber network, fiber network connection, as it serves as the city's emergency operations center. In the case of emergency, this building is the communication hub for the city that connects it to the city and state resources. So the general plan goals are to maintain the city's infrastructure and avoid future upsizing. Doing this project now makes sense, since we're active on the site for the building's renovation, and as such, this project will be an efficient use of time and resources. The Ballinger Road Bike Improvements. There was a 2020 sto, study of the Ballinger Road corridor, and it identified ways to enhance pedestrian, bicyclists, and vehicular safety on that corridor. The next steps identified in that report are traffic analysis, surveys, and preliminary design work, in order to decide between the two options that were presented as part of that report. This will take some time. We're actually having to do this work in conjunction with the city of San Jose. So it's definitely a collaborative effort. And we believe this initial phase will take two to three years before we can graduate to construction. So concerns about the resident's safety initiated this study, and the planned improvements will address the safety concerns. We'll be working with the neighboring jurisdiction, San Jose, to accomplish the project.
So on this one, so it's talking about, you know, sidewalk improvements and reduce auto speeds, improved crossings, and protected bikeways. Is there anything outside of what's described here? Things like, you know, reducing the number of car lanes and stuff like that?
I'm not familiar with the details of the report, but
Okay.
this image and the, the text came directly from their report.
Okay.
So the authors have been involved in developing the project as well as the study, the original study. So I believe there'll be some congruency there, and I cannot, can't imagine that would only be lanes of traffic. Usually involves crosswalks and other traffic means and methods. So our next project under consideration is the Civic Center microgrid. This one's interesting. Two years ago, staff, it's both, it's a CIP, the EOC staff, which is emergency operations staff, and this is still sustainability staff, we applied for hazardous mitigation grant program funding, and it was two years ago, we finally got notification in February that we were successful on this application. So we're, we're jumping to rise to the occasion here. We are receiving grant funding, and it's also a project that is in line with our climate action plan, as well as it serves to improve the emergency responsiveness of our facilities, as well as our longer term sustainability. So this plans to install photovoltaic voltaic panels, either in the parking lot or on the roofs or both, some combination, and a battery backup at the Civic Center, and in order to have backup power in the case of emergency. And we're also hoping to use this resource to lessen our reliance on electricity from the utility company. This project addresses the general plan goals by improving the facility's efficiency, aiming to conserve resources, improving efficiency and delivery of services by being a more effective emergency center, and works to improve the city's infrastructure. The extension of the existing trail is called the Santo Mosquino Saratoga Creek Trail, and we're looking at doing a feasibility study to see what it will take to extend that trail. So this is over on the east side of town at the newly acquired Lawrence Midi parcel. We're working on the design of that park now. And on the property that is in Cupertino realm, we are continuing the Saratoga Creek Trail into the park northward, and however that trail will perform a graceful roundabout ending in the park. We can't take, we can't take the trail past the northern end of the property, because that is beyond Cupertino's jurisdiction. In order to extend the trail, we will need to work with the city of Santa Clara, the city of San Jose, the county of Santa Clara, Caltrans, and Santa Clara Valley Water District. This project is a feasibility study to gauge what it will take to extend the trail. So on this project, we're initiating the investigation as to what it will take to get other jurisdictions to continue the trail past Cupertino, so that we can provide a continuous trail for our residents. This project is all about working with the regional agencies. And the Stevens Creek Bridge Repair. The Stevens Creek Bridge, and this is a picture of it on this first page, the bridge needs repairs, and the repairs are significant enough that we were asked to separate this bridge from the other six bridges that are in an existing CIP project called the City Bridge Maintenance Repairs Project. We're receiving federal funding for 80% of this project and the other projects from the FHWA Highway Bridge Program. This project is coming to light now, because the funding from the government is becoming available now. So the maintenance project itself is helping a bridge that is old and in need of foundation work, actually. The maintenance project will improve the effectiveness, effectiveness of that bridge, and enhancements will be an improvement to our infrastructure. We're hoping to improve the pedestrian and bike experience on that bridge when we're at it. We'll see what the opportunities are once we get into the design and costing. And I did want to mention, this is an existing project we have, that we would do some work at city hall. The council directed us to expand the project to be a larger project. It says 80,000 square feet. The main directive is to consider options other than only renovation. So a new city hall project is on, it, one of the things we're considering. And we're asking council, we asked council to fund just a small portion of the overall project initially. It might be a 70 or 80 million dollar project, we don't know yet. We've asked for $1 million in next year's annual budget in order to get a start, to hire consultants to find the best strategy to move forward. Since council gave direction on this project in February, the program and budget is project are not realistically developed yet. The council has requested that we consider options for a new building and possibly parking. Improvements to this facility will improve our, the efficiency and our use of utilities. HVAC and the other systems are over 50 years old in that building. And it will improve parking, the parking situation. A new city hall has the potential to provide an improved site and building program that suits the current needs of residents, and may even improve the city's ability to generate revenue. All goals of the general plan. So in summary, we are proposing six new projects and expanding one existing project with the fiscal year 2324 CIP. The new projects include two early stage mobility bike ped projects, two infrastructure repair projects, and two projects that directly and positively impact our efficient use of electricity and communications. We believe that all these projects conform to the goals and policies of the general plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just want to point out that, you know, we're not here to debate whether these are good projects or not, only to decide if they're in conformance with the general plan.
So I'm looking at the, the package that was delivered, the project narratives document, and I didn't see the last one that you covered, the city hall.
Oh, and the, in the, one of the attachments, I believe it was attachment three, the project narratives?
Yeah.
I, I did, I included the six new projects. I did not include a sheet on the city hall project, because it was an existing project that we're expanding.
It's an existing project, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we move to public comment now? Hold on, do we have any cards, Sarah?
We have two. So first up is Jennifer Griffin, followed by Connie Cunningham.
Okay, welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, city council. Susan, thank you very much.
Planning Commission.
Staff, oh, God, sorry. Okay, planning commission. Yeah, it's been a long, long time.
Guess what? No, we were not promoted.
I know, I, I wonder. Anyway, thank you to Susan and, and our Mr. Gentleman over here. I'm sorry, I'm, it's been a long evening. Mr. Gentleman, that's a good name. You guys do a great job, and I appreciate all the hard work on this. And thank you for explaining CIP again. I seem to be muddling my way through what we're doing with the projects, and I need a refresher course. I think in this one, I like the fact that you numbered them. So it's like, one, two, three, four, five. I just had a couple of comments. The, I, I know we're not here to debate the Ballinger Road Bike Improvements, but I really don't think option A is a good one, reducing a lane on both sides of Ballinger. My husband spent 10 minutes telling me why that would be a disaster, and my mother-in-law's not real happy about it either, because you can't take traffic signals off that road. It's very, very dangerous. You can't make left turns from the center island. You have to have traffic signals, and there's so much traffic now. My husband's main concern was emergency vehicles and trying to get onto Lawrence Expressway. That, that is, and also the part down by Deansa Boulevard is really challenging. But, yeah, I think that option two, I, I did attend all the meetings on this, and I will in the future. I think the option two about fixing the parts of the road that have problems, but keeping the double lanes, the two lanes each way, are very, very important. The one about, I think it was the microgrid, what about the swale that's in the parking lot? I remember that that, we, we put that in like 15 years ago, and it was a, it was a, what you call tour de force at the time they put it in, because what you call tour de force at the time they put it in, because it was really, really groundbreaking, and I would hate to see that be sacrificed. There's a lot of vegetation in there, and animals, et cetera. And then I think the, oh, the, the rebuilding of the City Hall. I, you know, we're gonna be running, I, I don't know what the governor's thinking, but we're gonna be running into massive budget problems in this state, and I hate, you know, with the recent bank collapse, Silicon Valley Bank, and First Republic, et cetera, et cetera. I really, really am dubious about the economy, where it's going, and I think we need to make it earthquake safe, and then just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next is Connie Cunningham.
I actually don't have any comments.
What?
I actually don't have any.
Oh, okay, great, so we will move, we'll move to the online participants, welcome Rhoda Frye.
Hi, hi again, third time's a charm. Okay, first, I would like to remind you of the general plan goal LU-8, that's fiscal stability, maintain a fiscally sustainable city government that preserves and enhances the quality of life for its residents, workers, and visitors. And let's highlight fiscally sustainable city government. You know, we can remodel that City Hall and replace the HVAC and electricity. You don't have to build a new City Hall to replace the HVAC system or to replace the electrical system. It would be a fool's errand, and it would actually be fiscally irresponsible to do so. And I would urge you to not, to make that project, that project is inconsistent with the general plan, especially as Jennifer was talking about what's going on fiscally, but the, with the, the state right now. And also, I'm going to add, with Cupertino, I did send you an email earlier today on that. The other one I wanted to ask about was the Stevens Creek Bridge. I recall there had been discussion about replacing the entire bridge, and now it looks like it's just the abutment, so I'd love to get some more information on that. Now, and so please drill down, look at what our needs and our wants are. I'd like to focus on needs on this, so we can be compliant with the general plan. Now, look, right now, we're in economic uncertainty. Last month, in February, our city received, received zero money in sales tax revenue. Our four-year average has been $6.75 million. This is a big deal. According to yesterday's Cupertino Audit Committee, which I attended, the state previously disper, had dispersed too much money Cupertino, but it was about, well, you know, what we'd be getting in, in general, so now they're making adjustments. Per the meeting, the zero in February was unrelated to the anticipated audit of one of Cupertino's major sales tax revenues sources. So, and my understanding is, is that the city attorney has written a letter to the Audit Committee that does pertain to, to that, that audit. Our city's future revenue sources are at risk. And we get a lot of money from, from Apple, everybody knows this, we get, and you can read more, more about that. We got a big boost with the COVID years, and now that's kind of come to an end. Also, in the budget, our, that was, our budget from June 29th.
Finish up, Rhoda.
November 15th, our, it, it clearly said our sales tax, mentioned that our sales tax revenue is at risk due to an audit of, of the state.
Thank you, Rhoda.
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't see my clock when I was speaking.
Okay. Next, we have Sam R., welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I, I do wanna bring up a couple of projects that were on the CIP project list that are structural and safety issues that have been ignored apparently on this list. The first one is the McClellan Road Bridge. The bridge was built in 1924 and is passed its design wife. It is one of only two pathways that connect West Cupertino to other parts of Cupertino, Stevens Creek and McClellan being the two main arteries to connect the two halves of Cupertino. It's really concerning, given the significant storms that we've had, that structural projects are being ranked as low in priority or medium. I don't understand what the basis is for the, for the ranking. I have looked at the spreadsheets and the safety column, and it appears that the safety column is, is being loosely used in various projects that are park improvement projects with the shared structures, and calling those a safety project, and thereby critical infrastructure improvements. Specifically, I want to call out four projects, out of which two projects I want to prioritize and request your attention to. The first is the McClellan Road Bridge, which is built in 1924, and it's a safety hazard for the many, many cars that traverse the road to go to the schools for pick and drop. It's putting families at risk by not addressing that bridge. The second is the Merriman Road Storm Drain. As you know, the Merriman Road area is neglected. Our City Council, as well as Planning Commission, is unfortunately not represented equitably by commissioners and council members that are residents west of Moda Vista. You know, it turns out that a majority of both council and planning commission is either city center or east of that, and unfortunately, our projects on the west are getting neglected. I request the Planning Commission to recommend much-needed structural improvements to projects such as the McClellan Road Bridge Repair, and the bridge, I, I wouldn't even call it repair, but reconstruction of McClellan Road Bridge, the Merriman Road Storm Drain Repair, which is in urgent need, given the storm season we have right now, and as a third project, the Regnoard Road Stabilization, which is critical for the many residents of Regnoard. Rather than continue to invest in all of these cosmetic projects that really hinder traffic, these, these improvements that are suggested on Bullinger are not improvements, but they are disastrous for the traffic and for the safety of, of the general public that needs to commute in that stretch. I urge you to recommend removal of the Bullinger Road Bike Lane and any other bike lane-related projects. We have ample number of bike and ped projects that have gone into Cupertino. What we need now is urgent investment in infrastructure.
Thank you. Chad, I thought the McClellan Road Bridge is on, is supposed to be replaced. Is that not the case?
The McClellan Road Bridge is scheduled for work in some out-years. We're currently looking to try and acquire some more grant funding to cover the cost of that bridge, which is still quite, you know, still quite a bit more to, money to get to fund that. Our current plan is to try and get grant funding in the next year, and then begin design work early next year. Contrary to what was stated, the bridge does need to be reconstructed, but it's not in imminent danger at this point in time, at least according to the Caltrans inspection reports. They're flagging it as something to be looking for to have replaced. It's not structurally deficient, but it has a poor rating. So we're not necessarily in imminent danger, but it does need to happen in, in the relatively near future.
Okay, and what was the storm drain that the resident was talking about?
It was brought to our attention this last winter, that drainage along Merriman. Merriman Road is parallel to Foothill and just uphill from Foothill. There currently are no drainage facilities along that road. It's actually one of those kind of old county unimproved road sections, and during the large rains, we've had this last year, we did have some water that was, you know, coming from the hills up above, flowing down Mary Avenue, and oftentimes flowing into people's driveways. We are looking to see if there is a project to install storm drainage facilities along Merriman. We think that probably about 900 feet of storm drainage pipe with some catch basins could help facilitate this improvement. It's not in our storm drain master plan. Keep in mind, the storm drain master plan typically looks at capacity issues. As there's no storm drain here, this is, this would be a new storm drain project. So we've looked into it, we have an idea of what it would take, but we're still evaluating it, and we may see that in out-years.
Is that the one that some resident reported as 311 issue, where the water was clogging up against their backyard and, you know, danger of, you know, breaching? Is, is that the one?
That is a different situation than one, the 311 was a broken water main up off of Voss Avenue.
Okay, so this is a different one.
This is different.
I wasn't aware of this, thank you.
Okay, I see one more hand raised. Rahul Vadakar, welcome.
Thanks for letting me speak. I would like to raise my opposition to the Bullinger Road narrowing. I heard, I'm not 100% sure, I'm getting to know this only recently, that it will, it might become a single-lane road to, to make room for a bike lane. So I would like to raise my opposition to that. You know, the, the, there is a lot of traffic there, and I'm sure the committee must have done some research, but I just request that please don't do that. There are a couple of more things I would like to raise. The barrier, the concrete barrier that is there between, between the actual road and the, and the bike lane, that may actually be very dangerous, because if a biker stumbles on the concrete and falls on the road, it may be very dangerous for them. Moreover, in some areas, that has reduced the ability of cars to park on the, on the curb. I don't know how, how ecology trucks do their job there. That, I feel, you know, I, I understand bike safety is important, bikers are, you know, a very important part of our people, and we definitely need to do that, but that looks like an overkill to me. And finally, I would like to suggest to do something about Stevens Creek and, and Wolf or Miller intersection. It has been, been, you know, a lot of attempts have been made to make it better, and, you know, it's, it's kind of a mess right now. That's all for me, thanks.
Okay, thank you. That's all the hands raised, so we can bring it back to Planning Commission now. Who would like to go first? Seema, do you have anything?
Yeah, the only question I have is on the microgrid. If we are talking about putting in a new, or potentially doing a new City Hall, would that take care of the, I mean, would we put solar in the new City Hall, and would we need the microgrid at that point?
The, thank you, Commissioner. We received the grant funding in, in February, and as part of the grant funding, we're required to get to 60, 60% design within the next fiscal year. So we also were aware of the City Hall project, and so we would want to make sure that anything that we're doing won't be undone by what we're doing at City Hall project, so we will, we'll be proceeding as smartly as we can on that one, and we won't be wanting to waste any resources. So the goal, or the, well, the requirement is that it stays separate.
Okay.
I'm not sure what that means. I mean, so if the, if the new City Hall has, is lead platinum certified, which I know is the goal for the new City Hall, similar to what the Sunnyvale City Hall is, wouldn't that mean that it would be self-sufficient, and so then there would be no need for this microgrid? So what would be the purpose of the microgrid, microgrid at that point, once the new City Hall is in place?
The new City Hall project will be as efficient as possible that we can achieve, depending on the budget and the scope of the project. The microgrid project is meant to provide a battery backup, as well as a PV system for not just City Hall, but the Civic Center area. So whatever we're proposing may be housed, for example, in the back of Community Hall, or might be on, the PV panel systems might be on the roof of the Community Hall. We don't know yet. And so we're trying to install this microgrid that will connect all three of the buildings in the Civic Center, as well as possibly the annex. So we have goals that go beyond just the City Hall project. Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, but I, I, I know that the City Hall project also is talking about potentially putting in a parking garage, so it just seems like until we have more clarity in terms of what we're gonna do from, for the City Hall and/or potentially a garage to go with it, it seems premature to commit to a microgrid. I mean, I understand we have funding, but, you know, that, that's kind of like the, the tail wagging the dog, right? I mean, just because we have funding doesn't mean we have to build it if we would have to tear it down in another three or four years because we're putting in a parking garage. So it just seems premature.
So Chair, if I may, I, I think.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think these questions are appropriate, as they involve the projects that the CIP manager and staff has talked about, but the purpose, as the agenda is here, is not to discuss, you know, whether the project should proceed or not, but whether these projects are consistent with the general plan.
Okay, let me rephrase. Okay, let me rephrase. It's not, it's, I feel like it may not be consistent with the general plan in terms of being fiscally responsible, how's that?
Yeah, that's better. Yeah, yeah, I, I tend to agree with you. And I also, I don't even see on this narrative, I think, did you explain why the new City Hall project is not in this, in Attachment Three?
The new City Hall project is an expansion of the existing project. We have on the books the City Hall and Community Hall Improvements Project that's funded for half a million dollars presently, and we are planning to expand the scope of that existing project. And so as such, I thought it was appropriate to mention it at this hearing in order to have the commission consider the larger project.
Okay, I mean, because it would seem, as one of the residents pointed out, that that one is not consistent with our general plan because of the fiscal impacts. Anyway, David, do you have anything?
Sure, I had just a couple comments. One of them, there was some discussion around the bridge replacement. You know, McClellan Road was identified as a, excuse me, not, not McClellan, Stevens Creek Bridge is identified as a separate project from what you referred to as a group project of, was it six bridges? Is that correct? Is, is McClellan, the McClellan Bridge part of that, or what are the bridges in that other project?
With respect to the bridges, we get typically biannual Caltrans inspections, and with those, they provide recommendations on, you know, cleaning out rebar, patching some spalling. Of those six bridges, and I'm gonna try and pull this off the top of my head, we have Homestead Road was in that package of six bridges. I believe Stevens Creek was one of them, we're pulling that out because it was significant Think there was some work on the culvert that goes under Stevens Creek Boulevard, I believe Tantow Bridge at Calabresas was one of them. There's others like that.
So, so actually, I think, the takeaway from that is that, that group of six, six bridges are major bridges, you know, the major traffic bridges is, is what you're, I think what you're saying.
Typically, yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, so that was, that was one question. I had another question with regard to the, the Santo Massaquino investigation. So this is definitely one of the ones highlighted here as a intercity cooperative effort. I'm just curious whether currently any of the neighboring communities have similar projects to look at trail expansion? Or is it just us?
I know to the south, within San Jose, they've already construct, constructed that trail. The county did do a feasibility study and a trail study for the Santo Massaquino Trail a number of years ago, and kind of plans out a route of this trail from south to north throughout the bay. I do not, I am not aware of Santa Clara or anybody having definitive plans to construct any portions of this, but because of that countywide plan, it is on their radar.
Right.
And, and this project is really to kind of initiate discussions with, you know, all of the various entities. Those include City of Santa Clara, the County of Santa Clara, the City of San Jose, Santa Clara Valley Water District, as well as Caltrans. It's a pretty intensive cooperation with various entities.
Okay.
If I could add to that. When we had Lawrence Mitty project meeting and we had basically a joint commission meeting with sustainability, bike pad and park and rec commissions. This project arose out of those discussions. Those commissions were intent on having that trail continue and having us look at what it would take. And so we raised, tried to rise to the occasion.
Great. Well, thank you. I, I think, yeah, in a lot of respects, you know, it does make sense. You know, there's a lot of, you know, for any plans for that trail, you know, of course, the current plan with Lawrence Mitty is, is the new part, you know, is the, is the change part. So that it does make sense. I would encourage, you know, that, that you in trying to improve the chances of, of something happening and to make the, you know, to kind of justify the investment, you know, to, to try to, you know, encourage the other communities to revisit, you know, there's an opportunity here because, because Cupertino made a big change. The last thing I did want to comment as well. I was also thinking about the, the issue that Commissioner Linska raised with regard to the microgrid. I think that this has been a very successful thing at the high schools. The funding, the funding picture is actually pretty fantastic, but it did seem like there was a little bit of a conflict there because, you know, in the discussions around the city hall plan, the new city hall plan. One of the few areas where I think there was a higher level agreement was that there probably needed to be a parking structure. So it seems as though that, that, that particular kind of structure, you know, if you're, if, you know, it's possible that this, everything may end up on buildings and not on, you know, canopies. But it did seem like there was some conflict there. Once again, I think just from a balance of, I think it's, must be sixty-five percent or seventy percent grant funding. You know, at that rate, you know, perhaps, perhaps that's just, you know, justification to move forward with looking at that.
If I may, thank you. We are, first of all, I would like to mention that one of the residents mentioned the bioswale in the parking. It's possible to expand the PV system into carports even over to the mic, to the library area. That would serve the civic center. And we're also aware of the bioswale in the area that we've worked hard to implement. The city has an initiative to increase our green infrastructure, not to diminish it. So that would be a priority of the project is that we would not be reducing our green infrastructure that we've already established. Yeah.
Just one question. You had mentioned that the funding has some time constraints on it. What, what exactly needs to be done by the end of, is it this 2024 fiscal year? If you could explain a little bit more.
Yeah, the federal calendar is a little different from this municipal calendar. I can't remember exactly, but by the end of the year, we have, we need to have a sixty percent design sorted. So we would be in this first year where we're asking the city to fund a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's a minor, a minimal in a way, contribution at this point. We, and that is actually more than probably is needed if the federal government is going to kick in for the phase one. But we're gonna be hiring designers to look at what's possible. And trying to do it, as we said, in a smart way that doesn't undo or keep us from, limit our options for the expansion and the renovation as we need to do.
Got it. So the initial amount to spend is not actually to build any infrastructure. It's just to do the design phase.
Exactly.
Okay, understood.
Okay, Moody?
Okay, thank you. So I have a question to the city attorney and then after, based on the answer, I might have follow-on questions. So, so what exactly we are approving today? What are we voting on?
Good question, Commissioner. So we're here today to review whether this current CIP program is consistent with the general plan as staff has laid out in the materials before you. There, there's a matrix where they identify the projects which are on their program this year. And so your charge is, is to determine whether these projects are consistent with the general plan as staff has recommended.
So, so we're not necessarily discussing the merits of these. And, and we're not going to pick apart like, you know, we want to approve this, not this one kind of a thing, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I, I do want to echo the sentiments, you know, from a lot of the residents that spoke up, right? So fiscal responsibility is, you know, very important at this stage, given what's going on, right? So, you know, someone talked about another sales tax, revenue decline are going away. And, and the economic situation, right? So tax base in general. You know, some projects in this list seems like, you know, no brainer, right? Because, you know, you know, there is funding available and, you know, what we put in is, you know, very small proportion. So it makes sense to do it. But then some projects, you know, questionable, but I understand, you know, that we are not here to discuss, you know, the merits of the projects, right? So.
No, other than if it's fiscally responsible, I think.
So, that's. Yeah, so I, I, so going by that, you know, so let me run through the projects real quick, right? So Stevens Creek, Calabresas, Storm Drain. It looks like, you know, we have to do it because it's a dangerous situation. So it's fiscally responsible and, you know, it's a must do. And I'm looking at, you know, the, the fiber one. Kind of, you know, questioning, right? Like, do we need to do it this year or no, can we defer it, right? And also, you know, I'm under the impression that the fiber drops are done by the ISPs. So why are we spending money on, you know, the fiber, right? So. The, the fiber expansion, right? Are we connecting the buildings using fiber?
Correct. This would be connecting city hall to the city annex.
Annex, okay, okay. So, so I think, you know, so, so that one seems like, you know, a candidate could be deferred in my opinion, right? So, and Bollinger Road Bike Lane. I think it's a project, no, we need to study and, you know, improve because a lot of accidents happen. But I'm concerned about, you know, the alternative year there. But I, I hope and assume that, you know, residents get to weigh in on that, you know, before it becomes a reality, right? So, and microgrid, to me, no, no brainer, right? So it's like, you know, there's a lot of funding available, so let's take advantage of it, right? And San Tomas Aquino Creek seems like, you know, something we need to do, not a lot of money. So Stevens Creek repair, bridge repair. Again, a lot of funding available and, you know, and, and it's a must do, right? Bridges have to be, you know, fixed. So, so except for, you know, the couple of them, you know, everything, four out of five, six seems like, you know, must do, in my opinion.
So, Mr. City Attorney, we can, we don't have to vote on all of these as a package, right? We can pull something out if we don't think it's fiscally, or if it's not consistent with the general plan?
Yeah, generally that the, the answer is yes, Chair.
Okay.
I, I would, I would recommend you and the first staff to chime in, but look at the matrix that they provided. So for instance, there's been discussion about the city hall improvements and there's, there's a number of checks to show how it's consistent with the general plan. And fiscal stability is maybe one of them. And so it's, of course, it's up to you to determine whether these, these projects, which I think is, has, has, is on the capital improvement program for this year are not consistent and then to provide your reasoning for why it's inconsistent.
Oh, I thought it had to be consistent with all of these items in the grid, not just some of them. Is that not true?
If I could just weigh in, as I think with general plan consistency as a whole, whether you're talking about projects or the CIP. It's really looking at it as a whole. There could be a policy or more than one where a project could conceivably be inconsistent.
Okay, thank you.
From the perspective of the overall general plan.
All right.
We're looking for consistency at that level.
Very good. So, okay, I.
So, so if I go by that, the Bollinger Road improvement has, you know, the least number of checks. Oh, well, not, or maybe not, right? Because I didn't look at this page.
I'm sorry if my, my way in a little bit. So for example, the Storm Drain project is only a project that really is addressed in the general plan by the infrastructure section. So by its nature, it's gonna have less checks than other projects. I don't believe that is a good way to do it. It's more, I would say, overall intention and if there's a knowing the general plan and the intention of the general plan in that it is to be fiscally responsible, to have an efficient and sustainable infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. Does, do these projects meet the overall intent of the general plan? If there are specific concerns or reasons to say that it is not congruent with the intention and the if it does not generally conform with the general plan, then we would definitely want to hear that. If I may, can I speak to some of the concerns that I've heard from the commissioners?
Go.
Thank you. Let me see if I can get my list back up. The fiber expansion, city hall annex project, that, there was some concern about the, the amount of money that would cost, whether that was a fiscally responsible thing to do. We haven't got, this is a very rough order of magnitude pricing. We would, if we were given the okay to initiate the project. We would be coming back to council for approval of funding. So for, you know, the significant amount of the design build contract that it would take to extend the fiber. So there would be another review of that as well. It is a well timed project because of the ongoing project over at the new building.
So I had the same misunderstanding as Mooney. That, yeah, the ISP does the fiber drop. But what now I understand is this is to run fiber between city buildings.
Yeah.
Which would not, you know, be the purview of the ISP.
Right.
Okay, so.
So, so, yeah, so that's good. So that, that understanding is good. Now, the question is, you know, running the fiber between buildings, you know, does it have to be done this year versus, you know, can that be deferred, right?
It's simply an efficient time to do it. We could put it off. We have, the TICC has suggested seven projects. And we're only picking up one of them. We're trying to wait on the other projects to see if we can get federal funding for those projects. We just, it was the timing of this one.
Okay.
And the, the timing of this, I mean, or part of the capacity requirement is because, because the EOC is moving there. So that, you know, that, I think that that's actually the, you know, the, maybe the driving, driving factor.
Yes, absolutely.
But I think also, sorry, from a fiscal responsibility perspective, I mean, it's, it seems like it's a project that we're gonna have to do sooner or later, right? So, you know, it's, so I don't think really the fiscal responsibility applies as much. Because it is something we're gonna have to spend the money on sooner or later, whether we do it this year or, so we could look at potentially what is the best fiscal timing maybe, but from a fiscally responsible perspective, I think it seems like a necessary work.
Yeah, I would, I would say, you know, again, I have a lot of experience with the capital projects in the school districts. And there are, there are no cases where it's better to wait. You know, that the, historically, it's always been the sooner you can do it, the better. If you happen to be, if you happen to be working on the building and, and that's the time when you intend to, you know, make an expansion like this. And then you'll probably have an opportunity to save money.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense.
Could, could you talk to me about, you know, what exactly we are planning to do on the Bollinger Road Bike Lane project for two hundred K this year?
Thank you. Oh, yes, I would love to. Thank you. That was my next area to comment on. For the first year, we need to do traffic analysis. That would be the first part of it. There's going to be some preliminary designs, but it really, we have to do the outreach and the traffic analysis first before we can decide on what to design to.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is more like, you know, study various aspects and collect inputs from the residents and, you know, before deciding on which way to go.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, can we get a motion yet or does anyone else have anything?
I actually just had a, you know, a comment before we, before we go to vote on this, that it seems like in the past, sometimes this package, when it came up, was bigger than what we have here. But I actually, I like the matrix and I felt that these projects actually score quite well. I, I think part of the way to, to think about the matrix is not, how did this measure against all the elements of the general plan? It's actually the highlights of the places where it was most applicable. So it's a little bit of Benjamin Franklin sell technique there, but, but I actually think that the hit rate is, is very high compared to some of the things we've seen in the past as well. So, you know, support of the project.
If I may, I wanted to address one more thing, if that's all right.
Go.
Thank you. Overall, the CIP is asking for one point three million in new projects, the six projects. Overall, with the additional funding for the expansion of the other projects, there's four multi-year projects that we aren't discussing tonight because they're already approved. And there's also an, an expansion of building condition assessment implementation. We have a facilities report that we've got. We have projects that have come out of that report. And we're trying to address basically maintenance, large projects that are required on some of our older buildings. So we've asked to put two million dollars to that as well. With the city hall project, we have asked only for a million dollars. So overall, my point being, we are trying to be quite fiscally responsible to keep the ask quite low. And I will also say that, at least in my mind, and I have a lot to say about it at this point. The CI, the city hall project has not been determined. Council has asked us to investigate options. We have to look at what is the best what is the best way forward for the city hall project? It may be a new building is the best fiscal response for the city. That it provides the best use of funds and the best programming for the residents that's being required. It may be that a renovation is the best way to go. We have not yet had the time or the outside resources to look at that. So the ask at this time is to give us the option to proceed with developing that strategy, that programming. Thank you.
Susan, I, I have a quick question, if I may?
Yes, of course.
So the, the project description says that it might require taking out some trees along the edge of the parking lot. Can you give more details as to what those trees would be and how many and which one?
Excuse me, are you talking about for the microgrid project?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't have that detail yet. We have very, very conceptual, rough plans at this point in time.
Got it. Okay.
If, if there's no other comments, I'm happy to make the motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
I don't need to make all the motions, so.
Through to Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Sir, this is a pew here. I just wanted to make a note that the red, the draft resolution that was presented tonight is, is written up a little differently than it should. And so it, it suggests that the Planning Commission is recommending that the city council find that the project, the CIP projects in conformance with the general plan. It should just read that the Planning Commission does find or, you know, it just needs to be reformatted. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Okay.
Sure. Yes, so with that, then I would say that I move that the Planning Commission rec, find that the city council.
Just find that the CIP projects are in conformance with the general plan.
Interesting, interesting wording. Find that the proposed CIP fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. That we find it consistent with the City of Cupertino general plan in substantially similar form to the draft resolution attached here to as the exhibit CIP.
Okay, let's have a vote.
Is it possible to make an amendment to try and exclude the microgrid from this?
Yeah, you can make that motion and if you get a second.
Okay, so how do I phrase the motion?
Michael?
So it sounds like she's gonna make a substitute motion to find that everything on the capital approval program, with the exception of the microgrid, is consistent with the City of Cupertino's general plan.
Okay, so yes, I make a substitute motion that everything on this. Okay, so, yes, I make a substitute motion that everything on this list is consistent with the general plan with the exception of the microgrid, um, project. No seconds?
Okay, seeing that there's no second, I guess the substitute motion fails, so we can vote on the original motion.
Commissioner Fun?
Aye.
Commissioner Linska?
Aye.
Commissioner Mistri?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mariapala?
Yes.
And Chair Sharf?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we are on to item four. Hopefully this will not take as long. Consider the renewal of a conditional use permit and seek what exemption for an existing monopole wireless communications facility U two thousand eleven oh seven, application number twen- U twenty twenty-three oh oh one. The applicant is John Merritt. The location is twenty-two four seventy-five, Rancho Deep Cliff Drive, Assessor Parcel Number three five six oh two nine nine nine. So is there a staff report?
Yes, there is, uh, Chair Sharf.
Okay.
All right, let me just share my screen. Again, it's me again, uh, John Martier, uh, Senior Planner with the Planning Division of the Community of Elmwood Department, and I will try to make this as brief as possible. Uh, thank you for the introduction, the reading of the project description. So, uh, a little bit, bit, a little bit of background on this. In October of two thousand eleven, um, the Planning Commission, uh, had approved a conditional use permit, architectural side approval, high exception variance and treatable permit, um, for a cell tower for, for a monopine facility, uh, which allowed a seventy foot tall monopine with associated base equipment, six mounted sixty-four foot tall panel antennas, um, six mounted, the antennas were actually mounted at sixty-four feet. They weren't sixty-four feet tall on their own. Um, and, uh, reduced setback of eight feet from an abutting residential property line and a tree removal permit. So there's the, um, the view of the, uh, of the area in which the monopine is located. It's within the, uh, common area of the Ranch of Deep Cliff community. So this is approved with, uh, PC Resolution six six seven four, which stipulated a ten-year renewal of the, uh, use permit. Oops, excuse me. Oh, no, sorry. I apologize. Fat fingers. Uh, request is to extend use permit for another ten years. Uh, no modifications are proposed with this application at all. Um, on June fourteen, twenty twenty-two, um, there was a use permit, um, approved, um, to extend use permits for a co-located antenna on the same monopine facility. Um, the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six prohibits the city from denying the use permit application. If doing so would materially inhibit the provision of wireless services, which essentially means a regulation may materially inhibit provision of wireless service, not only when filling a coverage gap, but also when distensifying a wireless network, introducing new services or otherwise improving service capabilities, essentially that if the, it maintains that the city does have discretion to renew the use permit. However, if that use permit is not renewed and, but the resulting decision of the Plan Commission or decision-making body takes away from the existing services of that area, um, that is against the, the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six.
Okay.
So a little bit of analysis, um, this, this application conforms to general plan zoning and wireless master plan. Uh, again, no physical changes are proposed. It is conditioned to maintain a tree pole appearance and continue ongoing maintenance. That's essentially going into perpetuity. Um, anytime a building permit will come in or a new antenna, um, staff would, would, would look at this condition to ensure that there is, um, proper, um, um, conformance. The RF study finds that the proposed project will comply with FCC rules and regulations. The, this was attached to your staff report and found that it was approximately within two percent of, of what the FCC, uh, recommends as acceptable levels. And the Plan Commission, when rendering its decision, must consider service impacts and any restrictions on operation of the facility. Uh, the conditional use permit would, uh, be valid until March twenty-eighth, twenty thirty-three, if it is approved tonight. The recommended action is that the Plan Commission adopt the following resolutions, um, excuse me, should say, resolution, um, find that the approval of the project is exempt from SEQA Section fifteen three oh one, which is existing facilities, and approve the use permit. Uh, next step is that should the project be approved, the Plan Commission's decision on this, uh, project is final unless an appeal is filed within fourteen calendar days of the day of the decision. All approvals granted by Plan Commission shall go into effect after fourteen days. And that completes my presentation.
Okay, uh, sorry, do we have any cards on this?
We just have the one from Jennifer Griffin.
Okay, Jennifer, you're up.
Um, actually, I was quite impressed. I remembered this one, um, and it does look like a pine tree. I mean, it's, it's amazing. Um, so I like the part about the fact that you all would be working on putting more like leaves on it with a different color to make it really layer, look more and more like a tree. I'm very impressed with that. Um, and I remember that there is the eucalyptus sits up at, um, the senior community, uh, by Gate of Heaven. Um, what, I think they have a eucalyptus tree up there at the, uh, I forgot what that, uh, retirement community is called. Um, but my, one question I had, and this is pertaining to that law that went in about not allowing the public to look at drawings of copyrighted material. I can see this for buildings, but why did that come up on the drawings for the monopole? That I, that's actually in the staff report, I think. Why, why is that uh, law or bill or whatever it is, why is that pertaining to drawings of a telecommunications tower? What does that have to do with, like, copyrighted laws of a, of copyrighted plans of a building? I don't get that part. Why, why can't they put the whole plan for the monopole in the public domain so that we can see it? It, it, this is, this, my concern about this law that we're having to hash it out here in real time as we go along, and there are questions about the implementation in terms of, I, I'm, I'm, I ha, I think we're gonna have to have a city council item about this. I mean, the city council may not want to pursue it, but they're not the ones that are here having to slog through, um, trying to address how this, I'm gonna call it a dumb law, but you know, it, the governor signed it, but my impression of the governor is he just signs whatever people put in front of him without thinking through the consequences. So why is this law preventing the public from seeing drawings of a telecommunications tower? And why, what, what is the basis for this law? I, I just don't get it. Um, that has nothing to do with the telecommunications tower. I'm sure they're, they would like to have the public have a clear view of what's going on, but something has changed since last year. I've been coming here, you know, we've been looking at telecommunications plans and towers for the last twelve years. Why can't we see them now? And this law is the problem. We will have to discuss it.
Okay, thank you. So my understanding, um, from the city attorney is that if the applicant wants to, is willing to make the plans public and that anyone that prepared the plans, like the architect, whoever is willing to allow them to be made public, that they can be made public. Um, I'm not sure what the impetus for this law actually was. Um, it may be for copyright protection, whatever. Um, uh, in my conversation earlier with one of the previous applicants, they said that they would have had no problem making their plans public, but they were never asked. So now, are you the applicant? Would you like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, sure, go ahead. And by the way, which carrier is this for?
Uh, I'm representing American Tower, ATC Sequoia is actually the primary T. And we have two tenants on the structure, AT&T at the lower level at forty-seven feet and Verizon at the upper level at sixty-three feet.
Okay.
So both, uh, the major carriers, uh, are on there, currently operating, serving the area all along Stevens County Road. As far as intellectual property law, uh, I, I can't speak to that. We have no problem releasing the drawings. Um, typically, we're not really even sure why the governor signed that. We do know that we, most of our architects, and most of them are in-house actually, don't have a problem in releasing that information as long as it's not copied and reproduced. But these are the drawings, as far as we're concerned, public record. Uh, we're in the problem that we're proud of what we do. Uh, all of the documents which we submit, uh, the way we read the application are subject to public inspection and we'd be glad to have the public take a look at them. Or better yet, go down and take a look at the structure. Uh, it probably gives a better representation than actually looking at the drawings, but, um, hope, hope that I've addressed Jennifer's question.
Right, so the structure is really not changing from what it was before, other than perhaps
Yes, Chairman Sharf, that, that is correct.
Different color leaves or something, is that?
No, we're, we're not, uh, making any changes to it all at this point. If, if there were to be a change to it, as far as antenna count, something like that, that would most likely be done by one of our tenants, Verizon or AT&T. And they would come in, as John alluded to earlier, they'd come in under Section sixty-four oh nine and apply for a permit that way. Uh, our permit is for the master structure, which oversees the entire facility.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Be glad to address any other questions. I, I do just want to take a minute. I know it's been a long night. I want to thank planning staff. John has just been terrific to work with. We've had a good dialogue going throughout the process and, uh, we work with many, many jurisdictions and it's been a delight on this project, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Uh, hold on, I do see another hand from an attendee that wishes to speak, so. Uh, San R, would you like to talk?
Yes.
Sorry, I missed you earlier.
Thank you, Planning Commission. I would like to express my support for the project. Um, I think infrastructure around, uh, wireless communications is critical at this time with a, a number of residents working remotely. As we know, even the offices that have core people back are doing so for a few days a week, not every day. A number of offices have re-architected to have agile seating and no longer have dedicated seating. And so it is absolutely critical that Cupertino invests in improving wireless infrastructure and, uh, signal strength in all areas of Cupertino. And so this is a, a, a necessary infrastructure. It's critical infrastructure. And, uh, I implore the Planning Commission to please approve and, uh, move forward with this and continue to look for ways to improve the wireless infrastructure in Cupertino. I wish to draw your attention to the city of Los Altos, which has gone the opposite direction and you can get no signal in many parts of Los Altos. And that is a step towards being unable to use the city for the purpose of basic livelihood. And so thank you for, uh, keeping in mind work from home, hybrid work and the increasing density of homes, uh, in Cupertino as we continue to, uh, add more housing. But thank you for supporting this project and, uh, thank you for doing so efficiently.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, back to the commission who wanted to speak?
Uh, yeah, I have a question, uh, to the staff and maybe to the applicant. Um, so I do remember, you know, approving something exactly in this facility last year, middle of last year. So a ten-year extension. So what is that, no, we are doing today? Like, what's the difference between what we approved then versus what we are approving now?
Sure, I, I would love, I would love to explain that. So, um, the use permit extension you approved was for the antenna at the bottom of the tower, and this is literally for the tower itself.
That, that was, that is for what? Antenna?
So, yeah, so in October, I think it was October, right? It was Oc- October of last year, it was the use permit extension for the antenna that were on there, co-located on there. So when this project was originally approved in two thousand eleven, there are two use permits.
Oh, there are two, two of them?
Yeah.
So there's the structure and then, you know, the antennas.
Exactly.
So the antennas is the one that we approved previously. Now the structure is, is getting approved. It's kind of interesting. So, well, we should have done the other way around, right? Approve the structure first and then.
In, in a perfect world, that's how it would end up, yes, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Seema, anything?
Um, no, I think this is pretty straightforward.
Okay. David?
No comment.
Okay. So, can have a motion then?
There was a resident at Center May objecting to it, so I don't know if that means.
Well, we don't, no, we don't read, we don't read them. Okay, we just, we, we read them ourselves, but not, not out loud. Okay. So, you wanna make the motion, Mooney, or?
Yeah, I can make.
Okay, go.
Michael, okay. So I make the motion to adopt the proposed draft resolution to find approval of project exempt from SEQA. Approve the use permit U two zero two three I from zero zero one.
Okay, I'll second. Vote.
Commissioner Fun?
Aye.
Commissioner Linska?
Aye.
Commissioner Mistri?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mariapala?
Yes.
And Chair Sharf?
Aye.
Motion carries five on.
Okay, very good. Um, we have no old business. We have no new business. We are on to staffing commission reports. These are for meetings you may have attended or uh, Zoom calls you may have been on in the, uh, since the last meeting. Um, no, Mooney, no.
No, nothing.
No, I have nothing. Seema, do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay. All right, we are on to future agenda setting. Um, okay, does any, any of the commissioners have anything that they wish to propose for the agenda? No? Okay. Um, so that should be it. Oh, wait a second, this is important. Haven't got to do this in many years. Okay, we are adjourned.